We do this through wifi, DAS systems at venues or stadiums, malls, as well as the larger towers that everyone's familiar with. But what we're also doing right now is building out a small cell network for our clients Sprint to boost the capacity of their network and Sprint, if, and densify their network. So the traditional wireless network networks used to, it's the large towers, sometimes the big looking tree, and they panel antenna on the top of the roofs. And these were all built over the last 10 years, which everyone was using their phone for voice, some data, then 3G came along, 4G, and, you know, they worked great when they were using their phone, but everyone now knows their phone is basically a small computer. They use it to surf the internet, to order a car, to shop, to watch movies. And you could see this by this chart, which just shows the daily minutes of someone accessing the internet via their smartphone. And the growth has just been tremendous just over the last year. And what you don't see is that it's kind of putting minutes straight on carriers' networks. And you can see a little bit when they promise you unlimited data, but then they'll throttle you back at a certain point. So what Sprint is doing, other carriers, is basically they're using these small cell sites to densify the network. And the small cells, it's a low-powered node that increases the capacity of a network. It ranges about 500 to 1,000 feet, depending on kind of the area. And it offloads that data to existing larger towers. And our technology allows us to do this through wireless. We don't need fiber, we don't have to rip up any street, so it's all wireless backhaul to the internet. And what we do is we bring it to the end user, so the closest we can get to them is in the right-of-way and on existing infrastructure in the right-of-way. So we can build it on light poles, utility poles, or even put our own pole in the right-of-way. And these are some sites we've built already. The first one is in Los Angeles, next one is in New York City, and the other one is in Cleveland. And the equipment is just, it's an antenna, a radio, the UA relay, which is that cylinder object on the right, far right, and an AC distributor. And these are streetlights, they have a little bit more design, but we also build them on the utility poles. Again, it's the same equipment, and attached to the utility pole, and we can range where we want to put them, on the pole and what side, so.
So it's the three boxes?
It's three boxes.
And an antenna?
Yeah. And right now, we're looking at one site on Hudson Road by Mercy College, it would be...
That's that purple one, second?
Yes, sorry, so...
That purple?
Yeah. It would be attached to that Con Ed pole there. And the antenna would be on top, and the Con Ed required, we didn't work to design with them, all the equipment actually would be kind of crunched together on a sled, so if anything happens, they can come and just disconnect the equipment. So it would be between the mirror and the power lines there. And we could probably even face it away from the residential area, so it's on the back side of that pole.
Those are cable and phone lines, right?
Yes.
Between the, between the mirror and the, and the other...
Yes, sorry, yeah.
Not up by the three phase?
No, no, yeah. And we can, yeah, and kind of won't let us put it probably by the three phase, so it might be lower, below the communication zone, yeah, correct. Yeah, and it kind of requires us, only, there's certain poles being attached to as well, and this is one of them.
So does that cover 500 feet? How far into Mercy does that go?
I look, it would cover about, it's going to cover enough. It would cover about into this area. It's not going to cover the whole thing, but it's enough for them to pull some of that data. And, I mean, you're going to, this is a dense area.
Where are the, are there any other ones around here?
No, this is the only one in the village. Below is, no, there's not too many close by. I can find the other ones in the surrounding communities.
So what is the, you may go into this, is there a rollout for more than one of these? What sets the decision? Is it just data traffic?
Yes, so, yeah, I mean, this is kind of the first phase, and, I mean, really the first phase right now. Sprint, basically, it's, they looked at it as a 30,000 square foot view, just trying to fill in areas where there's high density, and they thought, close to right-of-way, where they could get one of these sites and offload some of that. They have identified this area as kind of a critical capacity, and that offloading some of this data in this area will increase the capacity in the sites, in the area for other macro sites as well.
I guess I'm getting to, what's the, you know, what's their commitment? Are they the only carrier that you're contracted with?
Right now, this is the only carrier that we're building these small cell sites for. As far as future planning, I'm not sure.
Just a wild guess, kind of guess for Westchester County, do you know what the install rate of these towers are? These towers, these antennas?
Yeah, for us, we haven't built any yet in Westchester. We're working with Pelham, Pelham Town, or Terrytown, we have...
And all of those places would be like one?
Yeah, they're all one, one or two at most. The, I mean, you, you have kind of the dense areas in the downtown, you don't have that really big density like Yonkers and White Plains, those areas where we have that density. We're building a lot more sites, so it's based on the density of the end user.
Not that it matters here, but there, is there a line of sight issue with buildings? Like, it seemed to show a more mesh network in the, in the one example you showed that was...
Yeah, that's, I guess that's just kind of for...
I'm just wondering if there was interference by buildings, like if you're going to many Yonkers and stuff, does that require, you know, more of a network design, I guess?
Yeah, and potentially why they require more poles is because of the, the buildings and the kind of blocking of the things. I leave that a kind of to the RF engineers that figure all that stuff out, yeah.
So you're only planning on putting the one?
Yeah, the one.
And is there any reason why, why neighbors would not be in favor of this? Is there any?
I mean, there's no health issues, and we can do mission studies, we're well below the FCC guidelines on that. I mean, anytime you put up an antenna or anything like that, you do have some pushback, and understandably so. But, yeah, we're well below the regulations, and we can even place on the other side, so the neighbors won't have to look at it as well. But we haven't received too much pushback on the side. But as we build them, obviously, aged that, we built four in New York City, I mean, and there's four other franchisees there that are building, that are really interested in any pushback. Sometimes you don't even notice that they're there.
And they're all building on for Sprint?
We are, but, I mean, other competitors are building for us, and ETG.
Yeah, there's other companies, I mean, I don't have an exhaustive list, but I know Crown Castle's in this as well, but these distributed sites, so we, but you've not been approached by anyone at this point?
Yeah, Crown's built in Greenberg, and I don't have that long.
So who would benefit would be Sprint users in Irvington?
Yeah.
Especially those attending Mercy.
Yeah, but it also, offloading that data helps the surrounding kind of sell that everyone is in. Yeah.
So from, from our standpoint, we did a little bit of, since we got your letter, we did a little bit of due diligence just to understand where we're at, and you, as the owner of the right-of-way, would need to grant permission, so I'm entering into an agreement, which I put a draft on the agenda just because it was provided to us. But, you know, that's not a final agreement in any means, but it was, it was a draft that was given to us, so if the board is so inclined to consider this, there would be an agreement covering this, you know, presumably, and it would cover the one location, but presumably, if there are others identified, you could deal with them on a case-by-case basis.
Yes.
But, but at least that model would be in place, for an agreement.
Well, I guess my concern is, I mean, I had three issues, like, I think, the contract provided, so I would think we'd want to get a contract that we liked, that would allow, answer the questions about what happens when there's more than one, you know, so. And I think we, I mean, I would feel comfortable if we had some due diligence in terms of talking to our cellular expert consultant.
Which we did, yeah.
And are the data, are the rental rates, the franchise fees, whatever you call them, are these in reasonable and within the bounds of what people are charging right now?
They're, they're in the ballpark, we would work on negotiating it.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure they're expecting, but we would, yeah, but they're in the ballpark. So it's not like they, it's not like they submitted a low-ball proposal, but we, we have rooms to negotiate with that. We didn't go any further, by the way, than that, because you, you need to be comfortable with the concept first before we start taking...
Well, the other two red flags I saw, one of which was, wasn't clearly defined, it was going to be an annual payment, but wasn't clearly defined if something got taken out. Let's say an antenna or system got removed from a pole halfway through the year, doesn't, really didn't say that the payment would be perverted or not, it didn't really address what would happen if there was...
There's a couple things, so also needs to be an escalation for the antenna.
Yeah, nothing about that, but the third one was, they got a single, a single global permit for fiber installation that would cover the, you know, the one-time permit for fiber, I thought was kind of an odd way of approaching it. It was one-time permit fee to allow them, even though he's, I didn't know, but...
There was a permit fee, but then there was an also my annual.
No, for installing. There was one-time permit fee, right, all by signing, all this and that, for a, for an optical, for a, for a, you know, a fiber connection. It was like a one-time fee that would cover the entire village for any number of fiber activities.
Yeah, anywhere in the village, yeah. So outside the first paragraph here?
Yeah, it's in paragraph three. So, well, yeah, it was ready to be, I mean, I mean, they're saying right now, well, you know, to me, it seems like one time, I don't know if that's right or not. It seems like arbitrarily, you don't know what you're getting into, and if they pay you once, it's like, you know, tickets for Manhattan Island, right? You never have the valuation to move forward, so, do you want to put it that way? But they also said that they use microwave to connect to the towers, so they're putting in fiber, at least in this case.
Yeah, I mean, these, we, it's all wireless backhaul, and that, we're using 2.5 spectrum for that.
Yeah, and we also, I mean, Larry had talked about it earlier, my, my concern was it was kind of a one-sided cancellation as well. We couldn't cancel, but they could, you know, like, if, if 10 years, and then, maybe for four years or less, they notify the building, it's not to renew any days, but, yeah, this isn't really going to die.
Yeah, although that's how, for whatever reason, that's how these things are allowed.
Yeah, well, that's something we...
We would love to see this stuff get down, closer down Main Street, so that there's coverage where so many people have, we can say dropouts, like, like...
I'm sorry, if you, did you show one of these things?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, I can't...
Yes, and these are, we attach to a streetlight, but this would be a wooden utility pole, so it looked more like that. What?
Does that, then has all the pieces on it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's four pieces, it's a box, and I think I can get...
Okay, and they're not gray blue, they're like that?
Yeah, no, they're all gray.
Okay. So if you go back to the previous slide, there was one that appeared like all the hardware was in a box.
Yeah, the, in New York City one? Yeah.
These are gone.
Yeah, these are gone.
Actually, less, less initially, I think, in some ways you'd have to decide whether that was more visually acceptable, and that's Queens, those, or the, it's hard to get up there.
Yeah, and what you'll see is the Con Ed, because we're on a Con Ed pole, we have a specific design with them, it'll, it won't be in a box, but it's, everything is bunched together, so it's not spread out on the pole.
So for removable purposes?
Yeah, so we can't put it, they won't let us put it in a box, because then, they got to make sure they have the key to open it, and in emergency, they just want to be able to kick the, kick the sled off and then get to the pole. So, hopefully it never happens, but that's what, the design we worked out with them as part of the agreement, yeah.
So the other, the other component is, once you work out an agreement, permission for them to be in the right-of-way, then, well, Con Ed then has to come in and grant permission as well, which you could assure us, you know, that it's, the order is village first, and then, Con Ed has an agreement with you, a standing agreement already where they'll let them on the pole.
Yeah, they just, they just want to make sure, we set them the pole, they make sure they're not, you know, taking it out, it's not part of any plan. And then we do an RF study with them, and then there's power, or to determine whether we're pulling power.
Right, things like that. And then the third component is that they need to apply to our planning board under our wireless telecommunications law, which is why it was important to us that they had a carrier identified, that they couldn't just throw these things up in the air without a carrier, because the, the requirements of the wireless law involve showing the need for the service, showing the emissions and patterns and all that, that has to be reviewed by our consultants, so it's a, they understand that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think we were clear about that, so at least you know what was involved, but, so in other words, you're, you're not approving all of the technical RF stuff associated with the site, you're, you're just allowing them to exist in the right of way.
Yeah, you're not, yeah, you're also not approving the thing at all.
No, you're allowing them to have access.
Other than use it, that it would be the planning board that would do that.
It's, it's a circular situation, because they, in order to go to the planning board, they have to show that they have control of the property, right? And so, and the only way they get control of the property is by coming to you.
I guess George can get on right ahead.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So the question was, can you have multiple carriers on one of these poles, or does it require multiple antennas and boxes?
You can, but it would depend on kind of, you would need additional radio, probably additional, you could put in another antenna that would have multiple carriers, but you might need another UA relay and another radio, just because it's different spectrum. And we're not sure if Con Ed would allow that kind of weight on their pole. Right now, everything's designed with...
Or you could go to light poles too, on Broadway, if you had to.
Yeah, we, we've attached a light pole.
They're, they're utility poles?
Yeah.
Don't think there's any difference?
There's some metal ones.
Well, the traffic lights, I guess that's right, there's no...
Yeah, those are DOT, but, yeah, I don't...
They don't have any stand-alone's, it's going to be streetlights.
No.
They're all wooden poles. Larry, we reached out to a POA, we haven't heard anything back, well...
I, I got no response to my email. I realize it was last minute, but at the same time, the board's not making a decision tonight, and one of them has the benefit of the one.
Right. So it does seem minimally invasive, so, you know, I guess you could paint it a color like paint clouds on it, and then, hopefully, like a kind of sky camouflage.
Yeah, I mean, we could, I can create a photo sim for you guys as well, and probably even put it on the backside of that pole, so.
We'll step on yours later.
The only wire would probably be from, yeah, it's on the power line.
There's Con Ed lines that you can see, but they run up and down, you can't see it there, but it...
Yeah.
Oh, on the pole?
On the pole, but you know, there's nothing moving in the pole.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think if we're taking a strong pole, sounds like we're on at least sort of the idea.
Yeah.
You're hard on.
Yeah.
Yeah, too bad it's not five.
I said this happened, I got to tell you, while I'm here, and my, my Verizon signal strength has dropped to one, it used to be two and a half, or something's dropped to one blacks down for the last month, and you can barely hold a cell conversation now. What's going on? Did they lose their tower or something? I mean, it was...
Sounds like the Sprint commercial now, right?
Expect things to go backwards.
True.
Except if more people are using it, so I can all that.
It's a lot of...
Okay.
All right, okay, so we'll be in touch.
Yeah, I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, we'll be in touch, and figure out the next step, but I think we obviously need to work on the agreement first.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't think we're that far off.
Sure, and I have an agreement, my specialist will work on that, who should we coordinate that with?
Go through me first, but I, I may be engaging our consultant to work on this.
Great.
All right.
Thank you so much.
We're good.
Thank you so much.
Leave our wireless.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool, right, yeah.
Yeah.
You might be the first...
I think you guys are the first ones, right?
Actually, we've been actually...
Larry's a bit of a tech jockey, so...
This is, we're, we're probably...
This is the first presentation that we've always had to use it, for the areas we're looking at.
That's true.
That's kind of a comprehensive...
Yeah.
First thing, first, first, and, work session.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up is the...
We've had a lot of...
First time you're talking about this.
We need to talk about this a little.
Try and sneak it through in the summer.
Yeah.
Because you want to go over quickly, any, I mean, any, the changes from the last time we met, I guess there...
No, I didn't make it, no, this is the same draft.
Yes, yes.
This is the one that's been put out for the public, public hearing. This is nice, Mark.
And I thought, I went with the idea of making everything proactive with the green checkmarks, whether it be the...
Red flags, red flags.
Full plus, running. See, that's good behavioral.
Absolutely. Reinforcement, that's much better than...
So we're ready for changes, is what I'm saying.
I like it.
No, 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 I mean, lots of changes.
No, no, what thing? Well, okay. I saw two places where there could be issues, based on what we, you know, since the last time, two places where there could be issues. First would be on this, on the second page of it, in D, about the noise level of 65 dBs or less. Um, no, you know, where the, I mean, some, some of the, there were certainly plans, machines at 65 dB, but it sounded, it looked from that research market, that quite a few of them are at 70, right?
It did range, but, you know, they do sell things.
I know they sell them, but you got to assume people have some now.
Yeah, but the only, if you look at the, the expected lifetime of the leaf blowers are like two to three years, is what the expected lifetime of them, of handheld and backpack ones supposedly, that's...
And then the other thing, well, that occurred to me related to that, the walk behinds were really higher, were higher than that.
Much higher.
Yeah, so, that would have, right, the way this reads now, the walk behind can only be at 65 dB as well.
Yeah, so you'd have to make that adjustment for sure, because I don't, there's no way you're going to get a walk behind of that level of sound.
So you would have to say, except that walk, they have to sit at noise level of 65 dBOS, except that walk behind ones can operate at whatever.
Or maybe not. Maybe not give a value for the other, because they could be up to...
Well, right now, well, right now, it, it, it's value is 65 or less. So maybe just say, we specify that the handheld ones must be 65 or less? Yeah, but you want, the way that that paragraph is structured, the auto leaf blowers have to meet current EPA standards, they all have to be operated in accordance with manufacturer's specs. And can we, those three were handheld, specifically for hand... Yeah, you could, this, you could do it that way.
Well, you want the backpack ones too, to be like that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So would you say in three, any handhelds?
Would you say with the exception?
No, no, you could do any handheld, the backpack leaf blowers operated at noise level of 65 dB or less.
Yeah, because the values itself for the walk behind are like...
They were much higher.
90 to 100?
Yeah, so that, that would have to be fixed. So, so then I, and, and I don't, I think the only change is we can, I think that's a small enough change, I mean, that's really, to me, a tweak that's not going to require reknowicing if you want to do that.
That's a clarification.
But, right, but I, I don't know if you want to change to 65 or not.
Well, I have some concern about 65.
Yeah, I know.
Can you go through them again?
Well, my concern is, what I saw, and again, I mostly looked at Home Depot, and the ones that did run at 65 or below, I'm not sure they were commercial-grade use, that they were more sort of home use.
Right, I went to the commercial sites.
And you saw ones that are...
Like Steel, whatever, you know, one of the major men, Echo. I checked out three different manufacturers, they all have models that they build for working in municipalities with noise ordinances.
Mm-hmm. Because in some of those...
It seems like best practice was 65 or less, the way, the way I credit. You know, like, there were some that were over, but they kind of used that as their criteria.
Sixty-five, sixty-five, fifty-six, sixty-four, sixty-three, that was...
Well, I don't have any problem with the project.
At least you're the ones for Mark.
One, one concern I have is, I looked at another manufacturer, which I think you'd consider as a major one, which is Husqvarna, and they don't even have a decibel rating the way the other decibel ratings are done. So those are clearly like, they're not, well, Husqvarna has, it's actually the decibel rating at the operator's ear.
Yeah, that's...
And it was a hundred and eighty, one hundred and fifty-two, it was a big...
There is an ANSI standard that...
But are they required to follow that in there?
It wasn't listed on their, their information, so then, then that made me wonder whether it's universally used or not, and that, so, which is what we were after, we wanted something that was used, I don't know, I mean, I...
Well, I don't know, do we have to, let's say, we settle at 65, do we need to specify that it's at full throttle at 50 feet from the source?
Well, you would specify that it's ANSI, whatever.
No, yeah, no, no, you know why I don't want to do that? I tried to look that up, I tried to look up ANSI 152 in order to get it, even, you have to pay $84 to get into the ANSI standard.
I got a copy of the test, but I had to search for the standard itself.
It's not easy to get, it's not easy to get it.
I knew that.
Okay, so why do you want to...
Because you're not really, the homeowners aren't going to run the test. It has to be tested in, in a facility that is set up within, you know, what do you call it, an optic chamber, an aortic chamber? Well, the tape, that thing, the sound-absorbing chambers, you know, get echoes in...
Wait, are you proposing that we should operate a sound?
No, I'm saying, not, but I'm saying that there is a standard that manufacturers go to if they do, do a standard.
And that, included in that standard, is measuring full throttle at 50 feet from the source?
Right. It's, the actual directives are in the appendix, I sent, I sent Appendix A or something to them.
Send it on to me, okay?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Yeah, because I couldn't, I couldn't get to it.
I, I was looking forever, and, you know, I've purchased several ANSI standards in the past, which I have done, and I know that that's how they make their money. But I did find someone who had basically duplicated Appendix A.
Oh, okay, so send it to me, and then I'll just get the line. So are we leaving it at 65?
Okay, I'll make... The issue is going to be, you know, first of all, there's a couple things, the most, the most obvious thing is, we're not going to really be enforcing it, at least it sets up, I'm, you don't have to please go out there with myself that much.
You, you, you could though.
I don't know, it's a question of looking at a model number.
Right, that's, that's the way it's going to be enforced.
If there's going to be enforcement...
If they're using this model, and the standard as such, then, and...
But I could imagine there could be a situation where somebody says, I am sure, I use my cellphone, and that thing's operating at 80 or something. And it could come up, I don't think that's going to come up on my thing, Mike.
No, and the idea is, over the next year, two year and a half to two, any new purchases are going to be state-of-the-art and...
Well, they should be buying either...
Electric.
Either low noise or electric, right? Another thing is, if they're not maintained properly, they're going to be louder, you know, with a badly maintained gas engine, something like, or low-maintained BMW.
Okay, how about on two, we said it's operated and maintained in accordance with manufacturer's instructions, they're going to operate, operate in a...
I'm sorry, where are you?
On D, on the second page, in the paragraph two, where it says it is operated and maintained in accordance with manufacturer's instructions and specs. Okay, again, I don't, I think those, Larry, should I make the changes before meeting, or...
Yes, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yes, to be seen, that part of clarification, kind of changes.
Yeah, no, but you can, I think you can make them, we'll put a new date on it, we'll have that out for the public hearing. Quickly run through the differences for anyone that may have looked this up online. But, I mean, it's not like these decisions were made over email prior to this meeting.
Right, 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 right. And then, and then the, one other issue that seemed to surface would be on the, on par- on the first page, on the paragraph three, that the exception will automatically expire on December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, I understand there was some correspondence, I know you sent it to me later today, but I didn't.
Yeah, it was basically Caesar Manfredi from Half Moon, and Rick Rizzolo from One Twenty. Um, I almost said one four again, I was wrong. Um, you know, kinda said, you know, on December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, we're still gonna have, you know, lots of walkways to clear. Um, you know, I think, you know, if someone jumped in, I think the thought process there was that by pushing up December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, they had the time, they had the ability to switch over to the more powerful electric ones for that purpose, I think that was kind of our thought process.
By the way, I double-checked the prices, at least at the, the Stile, Steel, or whatever, with, where you have to have, like, ba- basically, it becomes a battery pack on your backpack and a, and a blower, so it's kind of a, kind of a, it's a little bit hybrid, you know, they don't, um, because it's a cord that runs between the two, but anyways, um.
So the backpack powers that.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, you can get, you, you don't have to have that, but that gives you.
It's the most bigger one.
You know, the biggest battery and blah, blah, blah. Those things were, were not the price range that, uh, that Tim mentioned, he said it worked at like a couple grand for that stuff, that it's not, so, I think that, um, prices must have come down significantly.
Maybe battery prices have come down a lot, I think.
And I think, you know, I think our idea is to really make a statement that by December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, we're, we're looking to severely limit the use.
I do think totally.
If not totally limit the use.
Yeah, I think the other side of the coin is that if, um, you know, it turns out that they're trying to, you know, segue to either electric or, you know, I don't know, push for it or whatever, uh, and it turns out that, you know, look, now it's, you know, you know, the end, end of this year, and they say, look, there's just no way we can always revisit it.
It's tough to, yeah. The other thing I wanted to mention that came up, I mean, there were a couple other points, I think, that Rick made in his email, if I remember correctly, one of which is the, um, the timeframe, whether or not, uh, the, um, this is the one that allowed it only for three hours, whether or not three hours was enough to really do the work, what, do you? I'm gonna ask you, were you saying three hours was a potential issue? Did you mention something?
It wasn't for us, but it was for, um.
Oh, no, oh, that is field point.
Field point.
Um, and field point two, yes, and then, um, was there another issue besides the ti- not the time, but just what to do when, uh, when the expiration happened?
No, it was just, just the expiration.
Yeah. One of the things that someone brought up to me the other day, which I was, I was stumped, and maybe we've thought about this, but that field point is actually, um, you know, it's not a, does it fit into, it actually fits into one or two family properties, right? They're not, upper field point is not a condominium or a co-op, but a subdivision?
Was it, I think it was, um, the building inspector said that they're actually zoned single-family lots.
But are they clu- it's a cluster, it's a cluster building, this is not go-by condos and co-ops, it says multifamily and cluster residential on attached one family. I have a feeling that, I think field point was a cluster.
They're, they're assuming that they fall under that exception.
I would assume it's cluster.
I'm not saying they're right, I'm just saying. Some of them are assuming that, if it was arguing that, that they could just go in and, you know, we, I think, uh, each homeowner could use their own blower, because they fell under number two, but.
They might, they might both, they might get both those exceptions, yeah, and they can argue probably they get both those exemptions if they wanted to. But I think that their, their whole point was that, because they only have those three hours, they have to do it for five days in a row, and annoy people for five days, as opposed to they just do it all in one day.
But they have a maintenance crew that does it, so it's not like a homeowner can.
But do they do it for each person's individual walkway and driveway and?
I guess so.
Really?
Yeah.
Did you ask that question?
I didn't ask that.
Right, that's a nice.
I assume they just maintain the common areas.
You mean, like the side, sidewalks where there are sidewalks?
Well, they have, they have common areas all over, I mean, there's lots of them, you know.
Do we, I mean, I guess, do we have a concern about that, or we?
You know, to me, it's, I mean, I, I think that they can learn to deal with it, again, if it turns out that, you know, this is a couple weeks in, and they say it's just impossible, you know, I, I mean, I'm happy to listen to them, but I still think that, um, that it's that different. I, I mean, and part of my hope with this is that people, just usually blowers are less period, that they don't blow everything all the time, I mean, I think walkways are important, because it's, it's by far the quickest, easiest way to do it, um, but, you know, to grow grass clippings every single time you mow the lawn, to me, it seems like it would be, you know, just unnecessary, in my opinion.
That's what's at force to choose what to do and what not to do.
Right, so if you need to blow all the, you know, it takes them two days, three hours of time to blow all the, you know, um.
I think this is my notice, they have to think of other ways of prevention.
Well, that makes me.
If it, if it doesn't work, then we can obviously revisit, but I think if we start carving, we didn't even do this yet, if we start carving out exceptions, because people anticipate there might be a need, then we're gonna still be discussing this next August.
I don't know. Now, we got at least one, I thought, more letters from the field point residents complaining about leaf blowers and leaf blowers.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear that the correspondence from the Field Point Community Association doesn't imply that there's unanimity in that view, it's just that there was enough people that got the board to write, and they wrote, but that doesn't mean that every person at Field Point feels the way.
All right, and there was one other thing.
Actually, two other things, but, uh, let me do mine, the one quick before, the one we talked about.
Okay.
There was actually some correspondence that said, um, directly to Brenda about the law, one of them deals with measuring the sixty-five dB, but I think you already took care of that. The other was, um, this, I'm sorry, this is from, uh, Warwick Norton, one Artley Avenue East, um, and I'll forward this around, but I just wanna make sure we talk about it tonight. Um, it's not clear under A two, why the phrase the property owner is used, does this imply a contractor is not allowed to use a leaf blower for thirty minutes per week in the maintenance of one or two family properties? Yes.
Yes, okay, I think that we spoke that.
Yeah, we, this, we were kinda giving the exception for the, the exception to the person, the owner, that says, you know, before the grandkids come over, I like to blow off the patio.
Yeah.
That's, that's who we weren't trying to regulate.
After the grandkids come over.
We're after the, exactly, um, I think that's who we were trying to get.
Before the grandkids come over to blow the patio.
You know, so not the landscaper.
Okay.
I think we wanted to end with the landscapers.
Good. That was it.
Good, so they picked up on the intention.
So it's good.
That's perfect, you're right.
Thank you.
Yes, right. Uh, next one, the other one is.
Yeah, Larry made the point, I guess when he was talking to Field Point, they said the exception in three, um, for multifamily and cluster residential, they can do it between nine and noon, aren't they also, are they also allowed to do it from March fifteenth to June first, and September fifteenth to December fifteenth? They are, but I think we can make it a little bit clearer and say, you know, you know, except when permitted by A one, these are the conditions, something's come up with suddenly, which again, again, it's not a change, it's just an application.
This is too good. I just thought of something down here, we should, I should add something that says, maybe on the back, there's, might be some room if I make, um, make.
Wash that, it's already a little smaller.
Yes, we should add it, something about considering converting to electric equipment, is that too obnoxious?
No, I mean, they haven't figured it out themselves.
Yeah, right, I mean, that's a, I, okay, so, you know, the head is still ringing from all the gas.
Want to, from out this cupboard, buy some electric equipment.
Yeah, exactly.
Put it up from the.
Not, not a particular.
On the front, it doesn't really fit on the back.
I know, but it won't fit on the front period.
It says, follow these simple guidelines when using any type of leaf blower, so it doesn't quite fit in.
Yeah, well, it's not gonna fit on.
Make size matters smaller.
I could do that.
And you can just say.
You can take off its size matter.
No, this doesn't apply to.
I know, I know.
Doesn't apply to electric. I think, I mean, I think you wanna see the.
It's pretty obvious, though, isn't it?
It's, it, that definitely says gas plant powered, but maybe that's not obvious, maybe they, they're all the same, I don't know. I mean, the law, make that a little smaller, and you say, you know, no, doesn't apply to the, I don't know, where you put it.
At the bottom.
Yeah, right at the bottom.
I could make the homeowner's penalty thing a little smaller, I could make size matters a little smaller, fit into large.
You can squeeze it in. That's really, I think that would be good. And I.
All right, so didn't you already print them?
No, I haven't, but these are just, uh, proofs, just.
Oh, 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 oh.
But I, that's the next thing I pointed with.
Coasters.
With this, I wanted to talk to Larry about the, I got the, you wanna talk price of the?
We can work out the details in Karen, but that's fine, I mean.
It's like, now, it's the same as the water cards, as the irrigation card, so it's like ten fifty, for the seventeen fifty, I think, is the count.
Right.
And then you did the valet from that, they fit in standard business at most.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And then we'll be mailing them to landscapers and all that when they register.
So if that's the quantity you want, if you need more, we'll just, we'll just scale up silently.
These are just stock quotas, you don't have to pay any royalties. Did that, that one does kinda look like a Searmark to me at the bottom, blowing it into Larry's culvert.
Well, see, at least that guy's blowing up a whole lot of leaves.
Yeah, the other four guys, three guys aren't doing anything.
This guy's getting a lot of leaves.
I thought these were good images.
They are good images.
They're classics.
And that guy, that guy's doing a good job, too, just in one single backpack blower.
Yeah, could be electric.
It looks electric.
You don't have to think twice, we have that one, why don't I can reach for a leaf blower, clean up blah, 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 and, you know, or consider electric, which these laws don't apply to, or something, anyway.
That's where I would.
Well, that's where.
Maybe, take three times.
But you know what, I, okay, so.
Yeah, we'll leave it to you.
Yeah. But what were the changes, the two changes, substantive changes that you, or incident clarity, clarification changes? I'm sorry, maintaining and operated courtesy is already adhered.
Yeah, you got that one.
Yeah.
Um, and then, the, the operating at the, but, but, but the, the exception for walk behinds, but you don't wanna put that on here, I don't think. See, and.
Yeah, I have to put something on there, because I can put something.
Well, you can, I think you'd be able to fit, fit it all in there, handheld and gas-powered leaf blowers, well, no, they are, I guess, because they all have done VDP, I don't know.
I'm just gonna, I was, um, I was thinking about it in a phrase like, with exception for walk behinds.
Yeah, but that would, but it's only modifying the middle thing.
It only modifies.
Operating at a noise level.
Yes.
So you could, you could go put a parenthetical, put parentheses before.
Or an asterisk.
Yeah, but then you're gonna have the line, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna have another line no matter what, so, but I just wanna make sure that we are clear on that one.
And then the other thing was just about, but you don't have the exception anywhere, with a cluster, it's tough.
No, because I thought.
Yeah, no, doesn't need.
In detail.
Right.
Anyway, regarding, this was.
I will say that, I know we haven't asked yet, but Paul Finer wants to know if he can borrow our law, because they're gonna consider this in Greenberg now, so, he likes our compromise, he said, so it's, uh.
Oh, no one else does.
Yeah.
Maybe. Well, the case is.
Yeah, he could, you know, I, then finally, he can change that to.
Paul Finer.
What we were.
So this comes up again for our next public meeting?
Yep.
Yes.
For a vote.
Oh, that exists.
And comments.
Okay.
Okay, discussion of landscaper registration process.
I have some ideas.
Yep, yeah.
Um, did you?
No, I just said this is a good, a great topic.
Um, okay, can I look into this a little bit, the, um, Larry rode around to the villages and Sleepy Hollow had a lot that's no good, I don't think Terry Towns is good.
Yeah, of course, it's a good service.
What? No.
Just had a hard.
But it seems to me that it's actually pretty simple. Now, to operate, or, to op- background, to operate in Westchester County, they have to have a home improvement license, and I finally was able to get the, you know, Westchester County law, and, and a landscaper can't operate in the county unless it's got a home improvement license, and he has to be conspicuously displayed on, on any vehicle used in the business. And to get that license, the landscapers have to verify that the leaf blowers meet the EPA, although it says face to two thousand exhaust, two thousand seven exhaust emission standards, I think they've gotten stricter since then, it should, it should say current, but, um, anyway, what else is?
Yeah, but that's not, that's just emissions.
That's emissions, yeah. And the licenses are good for two years, uh, the county license is good for two years. It does say a village could separately require a license, in which event the county rules don't, don't apply, but I, I don't, I don't think you wanna get into licensing, licensing them, so it seemed to me, and it does say, all motor vehicles that are used by landscapers shall, once such vehicle is parked at the job site, display on both sides of the vehicle the names and address of the landscaper, and letters and numerals readily eligible from distance fifty-five, fifty feet, so I guess that's, so you'd know who it was, if you need to report it, but anyway.
Well, that's a good one, Hal.
It's in the county, it's in the county thing, so, couldn't the village, and, could the village just require registration and say to register, you have to be registered in the village to work in the village, and to register, you have to show a valid county home improvement license, which sounded really easy, but then this morning, as I was walking through Artley State Bike, this, when I walked down the street, and, which is all unincorporated Greenberg, so all the leaf blowers were out, to see, actually, whether you could see these licenses, and you, you could on a lot of them, but there are also Yonkers home improvement licenses, they, they obviously do it separately.
But they may just be raising revenue.
I don't think that there's.
Well, the county law does permit you to do it.
Right, I thought the Yonkers license was to actually use their organic waste.
Oh, maybe, maybe, I don't, I don't know.
I think you still needed, I understand, where you still needed the county, I could be wrong.
I have to say, I didn't see, I didn't see it on all the trucks, but you know what, we could just require them to show, and then, and then another thing, another truck I saw was from Connecticut.
I think they're supposed to have a Westchester license.
Yeah, and they didn't have it.
You'll see trucks with Connecticut, Westchester, Rocklands licenses on their bumpers, many.
Okay, these didn't all have it, but anyway, okay, so we'll make them have a county, so you, to register, you have to show a valid county home improvement license, and then that you have to verify that, and verify that you've read and are gonna comply with the leaf blower law, the courtesy card, any other relevant provisions of the code.
Yes.
Um, and then, if you get your registration, the clerk or whoever gives you a tag, and you have to paint a tag on your rearview mirror.
A rearview.
You have to be carrying with it, well, that's, that's what, you use the tags for.
Oh, use for parking permits, yeah.
Yeah, but it's easy to see.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, it was kinda hard, I wouldn't want a decal for the, for the truck, because I was, I was having a really hard time seeing them on these trucks, and if the trucks are open, can't see it, they're on the front end, but if you have the tag in, you'd be able to see it, this truck is, as, and that, that'd be pretty simple law. The only complicating thing, though, is, so, some guy comes in, he's got a landscape business, he's got three trucks, so he gets the tags for the three trucks, I guess you could give him as many tags as, as he has, you know, trucks, whatever, if, that doesn't have to I guess you could give him as many tags as, as he has, you know, trucks, whatever, if, that doesn't have to be in the law, you know, it's just this administrative, I think. But, um, and he says, yeah, 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 I read the law. How do you make sure that his, his guys, the guys who work.
He's gonna be untapped for the fine now, not just the homeowner.
Yeah, but, but part, part of it isn't just the violation of the law, part of it is the, you know, the courtesy stuff.
Well, the courtesy stuff will end up with complaints, right? They'll end up having noise complaints. So everybody takes a test, see who they get.
But see, I think, I think it's the only way to do it, because you can't have, you can't have the work, individual workers coming in and registering and then, you know, carrying the registration in their wallet, I mean.
No, it's too much.
No, that is.
Well, no, I mean, a lot of businesses have different workers every day.
Yeah.
Every week.
They're daily, yeah.
So the, so the owners, whoever gets the registration or does the registration has to, has to attest to the fact that they will, has to commit to the fact that they'll provide this information to any employees they have.
And the homeowner is still ultimately the one who's making the decision to hire that contractor, and everything that comes with that contract.
Yeah, but, and, and, and I think, I think that works with, with the law, not using a leaf blower when they're not supposed to using the right kind of leaf blower. But it doesn't really have to do with, you know.
Not ready.
Well, no, about, you know, natural when these are people's faces, when they walk by and stuff like that.
Right, that's not, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess there's only so much you can do.
I don't think you can enforce courtesy, but I think that, that having people aware of what is good and bad behavior, just not just the owners, but the neighbors, you know, the residents know that there are some things that are kind of. Because this list actually came out, the list of the checks came out of three or four sources, some of them from California and some of them from around here in Connecticut and I don't know where else. And then I passed it by a couple landscapers who sort of gave their input, so it's like, it's almost common sense stuff.
Okay, so do you want me to address some of the law in those lines? Um, I think it's pretty.
Very simple, we just.
Yeah, I guess, you know, now.
Whatever you meant in the building.
Yeah, I looked at the, I did look at the Terry Town one, because county had said she liked it. I think part of why people liked it is they, because it was calling it green industry contractors, it's actually a pretty misleading term, because it has nothing to do with green ecological, it's just green grass is green, that's why they call it green industry.
So what are they, are they leveraging off besides getting?
Pardon?
What are they leveraging, they use them for, you know, what do you mean?
I'm not sure, well, the other thing I wanted to mention that they had, and I can't imagine you are, well, they make, they do make the contractors come in to prove that they have the qualifications and background to do the work. I don't think you want to get into that.
To me, if they have the Westchester County license.
That's right, just require the license.
And I think.
You know what, I think, I think this law was written probably before the county license, yes, pretty old, nineteen ninety, so it would have been before. And then the other thing, it required, it requires them to provide the village with an annual list of the amount of pesticides, herbicides used, I don't think you want to get into that.
No, that's, that's.
Yeah.
It's a different, for a different day.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing I think of this is administrative, not the law, but I think we should try to make the fee rather minimist and kind of cover the costs of Brendan's time or whoever has to administer it, but not, we don't want to use this as a revenue generator or a hammer. The, uh, we, we want this to be a compliance mechanism more than a revenue generator.
Way to build in a good contact list to be able to contact the active landscapers on, uh, we should.
So do you have any, what, twelve hundred?
Twenty bucks.
How much?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, it's just.
Like. Will that cover all costs?
Yeah, no, I, I would doubt that's not it. You think twenty-five would cover?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say.
Sounds like Larry's working to do the works.
Larry loves landscapers.
I mean, that, that's what we use for the other example, which we'll get into soon, is the residential parking purpose, which were really, um, the board at the time wanted to set that to be just a very minimal fee. And it wasn't, they weren't trying to raise revenue, so we, we chose twenty-five as, as being a number that was reasonable.
But, but, but.
That was very individual, residents, not companies.
Is that, is that a permanent thing, or they come in once a year?
No, every year, yeah.
Every year, well, if the county licenses every two years, why don't we make it fifteen dollars, let's come in every two years? Or twenty-five a year, you know what?
I'd be twenty-five a year, make it end, it's the other nice thing you're into.
Because, you know, again, if one of the arguments is for making it more expensive, because they gotta buy new equipment, I want to put this on top of it.
And you don't care how many, you don't care how many cars they, how many trucks they've got, so for twenty-five bucks, you can get four tags.
Well, I think it has to be managed, you know, do they.
Wait a minute, you had, do, are some, are some of the companies bigger than that?
Not four, maybe three.
Three or four?
Who's four?
Four trucks. I don't know, but I think it's.
None of them, but there aren't like big ones like this, that would want to fire a tree, but not doing work around here.
Well, I, I have no idea.
I don't, I know of any, five brothers, I mean, I don't know who's.
Each have a truck.
Good, that's a good.
I'm sure Volpohne has more than four trucks.
Yeah?
I'm sure Volpohne might, might have contractors with more trucks.
Yeah. Well, there you go.
Does that matter, does it tax cost more?
You're gonna be making money on the ones that only have one truck.
Okay, so I'm making an annual fee for it, I know.
I think that's good.
I think it's like a couple dollars. Crushing Larry or Brendan.
We'll let you help with that. Let's hand out, uh.
As we follow the bankruptcy.
On the same level, the list of cards, that information as well, when they.
Yeah, we'll, we'll coordinate and organize everything that we're gonna send out, and this is your pipeline for communication.
Right.
And it's not just at the time they register, there's, there's follow up communication anytime you want.
Maybe give a narration card, so they can think about how to manage their client's water.
Okay, is there any other thing they need, any other law, we have to, we have to say that they've read and understand the leaf blower law, this is, what do you call it, the courtesy card?
And review the courtesy card, yeah.
Is that it?
Maybe, maybe one thing we can have this review is, is the, uh, the clearing of sidewalk stuff, because very often they have to do that anyway, it's not really.
What is that?
There's no, there's no, it's clearing snow, because a lot of them overlap.
Are there rules for that?
Well, there's certain hours and things like that would have to be.
And they have to do it.
Yeah.
Within whatever, so many hours after the snow stops.
So I think they should review that as well. We can take a look.
Why don't we just put this all under the heading of landscaper educational materials, or whatever, landscaper informational materials or something, and then, and then.
I'm gonna put.
This week is a card that we're giving out, but next week it might be a.
A margin of any, you know, no, no, whatever.
You know.
Okay, I'll, I'll hit, I'll hit some general language, okay.
And what color will be the tag, will it be green?
We change it every year, it won't be green every year.
And I won't confuse with, because it's not the same thing as if, if you're a business, you can't give a parking permit, a residential parking.
They're all different companies, we, we color code every year. We do it all as Paul, not a village-wide community poll. Okay, okay.
Just one, before we move, we gotta get this translated, right?
Eventually, I'm trying, I gotta find somebody who can translate, well, the problem I found before is we gotta translate, but somebody who was a Spanish teacher or something like that, the first time around, and, and I handed it to a landscaper and he was all, he was reading it, he was like.
Failing this test.
One of the five brothers, David, and then he said, no, we gotta rewrite this, because that's not how we talk.
Um, we do have translators that we use for the course, so maybe that's a.
Yeah, no, but then the Spanish speaking, the course helps. It's a good starting, no, it's a good starting point, but the problem is, again, that his point was, is there's terms of the art that he uses, and, uh, and Spanish, I guess, in terms of, this kind of stuff has a lot of colloquialisms that they use to describe.
Translate.
I'm trying to, I can't get in touch with my, my phone number doesn't work, so.
The five brothers.
He's, he broke off the five brothers.
Our office has their native language, so.
Yeah, we can just take a shot at it and then have them read it.
To tell you, they're not Spanish teachers.
No, 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 you're missing my point, it's not, there's a domain expertise, and what, what the common landscapers call circumthings is not.
We'll start with them, maybe, and bring it out, so.
Well, maybe that's what they call it, but would they, they'd be able to understand the formal word for it, so.
Just don't make your card laughed at, that's all. But all these rules in the front, most of this, I mean, I think we should just, yeah, get them, I'll send you everything and I.
Yeah, I mean, I could see, don't blow up, if I want to be careful.
No, I'm afraid that translates into colloquialism.
So I'll send it, I'll send you. Uh, the other thing I found out, they live it out, is a lot of Spanish stuff takes more room. So.
Yeah.
It's like, you don't think of it that way, but there's a lot of times it takes.
Wait, did you take off the picture?
You know, I can reduce the font size, I don't know.
Review of both downtown parking regulation revisions. So it's been what, two years and?
Yeah.
Two years and.
Yeah, I'm having way too much fun with, with the leaf blower stuff, so I have to find a name.
Yeah.
Stop that. All right.
It's like finishing a, uh, starting a new one.
Yeah.
So I.
I was thinking, it's like, finish one criticism, then another one, sorry.
So what, what I thought I, what I thought I'd do is, before we go through some of the detail, like how this translates into the local law, um, just give a, a quick recap of where we started and where we ended up, which is actually the easiest of places. Yeah, I know, no, so it's, it's been interesting, so, um, you know, one of the topics that we initially, um, decided to tackle was the overnight parking and, and whether it should be allowed or not in certain streets. In, in working towards, uh, allowing overnight parking on, uh, the streets in the downtown, uh, we identified that there are other, um, related problems. Things such as, um, employees of businesses, especially restaurants that operate late, later into the evening, who are parked on side streets, which then, um, take up spaces for when people are returning home from work. And the only place they would normally have to park is on their street, but it's taken up by various restaurant employees and patrons. That's an example of, of kind of a tentacle that started to reach out. The, um, we, we then, you know, looked at overall inventories of what parking is available, where it's available on Main Street. And started recognizing that if you, if you begin to divide Main Street into zones, and you look at the parking inventory and the parking demand, that there's an imbalance. That's a, I mean, that's a technical way of saying something that probably everyone recognizes, which is in the central part of Main Street, so, you know, call it a Dutcher, Cottener, Dakker. That central area is, uh, parking is in much more demand and much less supply than, than in other areas, that's essentially, and that all played out in the numbers that we, that we looked at. So we looked at, um, you know, to try to put numbers on this, we looked at, um, we did counts of spaces that are available, existing parking inventory, um, which we broke down into multiple zones. We looked at, uh, the number of residents who have resident parking permits in the, and broke that down into zones. We looked at, um, spaces that would be needed by business owners for their employees. We were able to, and that's what actually took one of the longest things, was to, to gather the information associated with that. We, we gathered from about fifty percent of the businesses on Main Street, which is a pretty high percentage. We got detailed feedback that showed us the number of employees that they have, the number of employees that drive to work, um, and the number of employees that park on a public street. And then for the other fifty percent, we took, uh, an inventory of the businesses that we missed, and we did our best estimate of the number of employees that may fit into that category. So to sum it up, um, what we are recommending is the ability for overnight parking to happen throughout the downtown district. For, uh, the resident parking permit holders will continue to operate as they do now, which is, for those that aren't familiar with resident parking permits, it allows the holder of a permit to park on a street, not Main Street, but on a downtown street. In excess of the posted time, between the hours, right now, it's between the hours of seven and seven, I believe. And we would then change all of the side street parking and all of Main Street, Main Street is currently one hour parking in large part, and the side streets are currently six hour parking. And, uh, we would change all of the streets with the exception of a couple down by the train station, in response to your comment, yes. We would change all of the parking time limits to two hours, that includes Main Street as well, so we'd be upping the time limit on Main Street and lowering the time limit on the side streets. But again, this doesn't affect the residents directly, because they have their permits and they can park in excess of that. The people that it would affect would be the employees of the businesses along Main Street. And so the major change, if you want to call it that, but one of the big components here is that we are proposing to allow the issuance of, uh, a fixed number of resident parking tags, which we will now call employee parking tags. That would allow those holders to park like a resident does, in excess of the posted time limit. The theory here is that those employees are already parking in the downtown district, so it's not as though we're introducing new people parking, they're already parking here. What this would allow us to do is to, uh, create zones where these parking permits would be effective and allowed. So it would allow us to, uh, take an employee parking tag and issue it, and, and issue it proportionate to where the spaces are available, so.
So an employee parking tag is different than a resident parking tag in where they can park, but not in how long they can park for.
Right.
Or just clarify, we call it an, I, ever as an employer park one, because.
Employer, yes.
Yes.
Employer is the one who's gonna.
The employer would be issued to his employees.
Right.
Or her employees.
Right.
Yeah, we're not gonna keep track of the employees, we're gonna be dealing with the employers, thanks.
Right.
But what we would do is, uh, the resident would have the ability to park anywhere they want, which of course would be close to their house, so, so we're not trying to change that. A, uh, an employer tag holder would be restricted to a specific zone, and that zone would be controlled by us in the term, and done proportionate to where the spaces are. So an employer that exists in the central area of Main Street.
Midtown.
Right, would only be able to park downtown.
Or whatever.
Whatever issue, and, um, so essentially, what we're, what we're doing here is we're, um, we're control, we're, we're using the employees as our, as our swing to make this plant work. To direct parking to happen in areas where we know there's available inventory, um, to try to ease up the pressure on the local residents of those side streets, for example.
Now, neither employer parking passes or resident parking passes can park on Main Street in excess of two hours.
Correct, and that's, that's directly, that is derived directly from the New York State Enabling Legislation, which basically says you can't issue these in front of commercial establishments or something like that, it's something to that effect.
Yeah, but it makes sense.
But yeah, and that's nothing that, that we ever entertained anyway, so.
It's actually a decent idea from offering.
Yeah. Well, they, I mean, they, they do these in very limited circumstances, and they certainly don't want, they didn't want to squash commerce, just so people could park wherever they want, they, so, anyway. So that's, that's kind of the overview of the plan, and, um, it took an enormous amount of editing of the Village COVID to, to do this. This isn't a small change, and, and I'm not even sure if, if this does go through, you know, it's gonna be a bit of time to coordinate the, the installation of new signage and, and all of that, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a overnight thing.
Can I ask, what, what, why, if we know, was overnight parking not allowed, and what do we potentially lose it by allowing overnight parking to occur?
Right. We had that, we had this conversation a number of years ago, and I've been, fairness, and so, um, and, yeah, no, I know.
But to put it in context, it's not allowed, this is the only place it is allowed, for the most part.
Right, there's no way they're parking anywhere in the village.
Right.
Anywhere else in the village, except on here, there might be a couple of scattered streets.
But the, um, the, the, most of the streets, not all, most of the streets in the downtown already permitted overnight parking, including Main Street. There were certain unusual exceptions, well, some were unusual, some were understandable. The, the initial exceptions were in the Home Place, Croton Place, and, uh, Grinnell, that quadrant of streets, uh, which are very narrow, one way, mostly one way. And so, you know, the, I understand, you know, we've heard a few different arguments from people, and totally valid, understandable, but we, we looked at it very closely, and, and the, the arguments mainly are that emergency vehicles couldn't get through. And I think, um, you have to understand what, what the restriction of overnight parking actually means, or how it actually is written into the law. What the, what the law says is that you cannot park for more than one hour between the hours of three AM and six AM. That's the way it's implemented.
By the way, this is not just.
Right, this is, I mean, it's almost the same time all of these, these overnight, quote unquote, overnight restrictions were enacted in other villages, um, as well. And we did reach out to other villages, by the way, just to see if they had a perspective and they, and they didn't. So what that means is that on these, on these undersized streets that were, were being shown to us. So, what that means is that on these undersized streets that were being shown to us, you could park legally on that street. Even with your resident tag, you could park there for 22 out of 24 hours of the day. You just can't park for more than, 23, actually. You just can't park for more than one hour without moving your car, which most people wouldn't do at 3:00 in the morning, so.
So, that's what wasn't doing, it wasn't affecting. Or allowing emergency vehicles to.
That's what our argument is. I know there's other points of view, which I understand. But, you know, we tried to look at it very thoughtfully and understand what the restrictions might have meant. You know, we even had indications from the police department and they were really speculative, is that, you know, in the old days, if they drove through a district, like the downtown district, and they saw a car parked on the street, that could be an indicator that there's something that's, someone's up to no good. You know, whatever, you know, maybe they're there for not a good reason, whatever. So, but, you know, again, it was totally speculative. I got that speculation from one other village, as a matter of fact. But they, you know, that's not a, it's not a current tool that any police department uses in terms of fighting, they have license plate readers, they have a whole series of other things that can be done. You know, our superintendent of public works, Greg Nielsen, did express some concern during snow removal operations and their ability to remove snow. So that we, they felt that the overnight restriction forced people to take their cars off the street, which would give them more room to operate in certain neighborhoods, like the ones around Grinnell and West Home. And so, I think there's some validity to that and I think we can address that in another statute. We have a law on the books that deals with snow emergencies and parking and things that have to happen during snow emergencies. We can adjust that language to address this, that, you know, any snowfall over X, whatever, overnight rules are suspended, something like, I mean, there's ways of handling that. And I don't think that it's a reason, you know, for 12 to 24 times, at the most, 24 times out of the year that you have to deal with removal of snow of big enough that you need a heavy equipment in there that you ignore the rest of the year or you don't allow that to extend the rest of the year. So, that's as much as we know about it. We did as much research as we could, you know, to come up with some good reasons. So, do you want to?
Do you want me to walk through this?
We'll start walking through it. It's a little bit tedious. We'll try to knock, we'll try to knock well, but.
This took a lot of working part, you know, this was, this has been.
Look, I honestly, I didn't necessarily say I was going to say this downstairs, but Brian and I were talking before and, you know, a lot of this stuff is interwoven and you can see that and that's how we got where we are. I think that we have the right data and I think that it's a plan that can work with the right enforcement level, which the police are aware of. You know, there's always a thought at the back of your mind that there's some unintended consequence here, but we'll have to deal with it, we'll keep our eyes out for it. But I think it's a plan that can work and work well in the long run, so.
I'll show you which things are the changes. So, on the first page, the reason holidays is up there is someplace else and had to be moved there, but those are the same holidays from there before, okay?
My birthday, do it by then.
And then on the two-hour parking, okay. So, this says except when parking is prohibited and where spaces are marked 15-minute parking. There's some of those. No vehicle shall be parked for longer than two hours on these streets.
Can I just ask a question on that one? Because where is the six-hour?
We'll get to it.
Because when I was, I must have collected.
There's six hours in here, we'll get to it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And this does not, it's not included here, but it's included in the residential parking permit section. It says if you've got a residential parking permit, you don't have to observe this two-hour limit. Okay. Then, if something's crossed out because it's covered in one of these changes, I'm not going to bother to tell you. I'll just tell you when some things are crossed out that are covered by other things. Okay. Then the section B is what Larry just talked about, essentially. There's no overnight parking in the village except on these streets. This is where it's forbidden. And then, as I mentioned, there's a few other ones. You can see they're already in here. They're the same, they were just renumbered. The ones that are crossed down are.
We're not changing any policies that were on these streets outside of downtown. Let's stay down.
Okay. Then, okay, well, if you go to the bottom of page three and F, this is a provision that was eliminated because of, here, no parking from 5:30 to 7:30 on the east side of Astor Street from the intersection of Main Street and Running South. That's not, the signage doesn't indicate that, that's just wrong. So, we just took that out.
We don't know history yet.
And, okay, then at the top of four, in the number three there, that's about parking and I think it's the Field Point lot that's been moved to another. What I did, this kind of mixed up, parking in the municipal lot. It had a whole bunch of things in here that didn't quite fit. So, there's a separate law dealing with municipal parking lots. So, that came out because of that. Okay. Mark, middle page four, six-hour parking. North Buckout Street, Bridge Street, east of North Aester. No vehicle shall be parked for a period longer than six hours on those streets.
North Buckout Street and Bridge Street.
This where you can hear the six hours.
I thought we talked.
And then on Bridge Street, east of North Aester.
Yeah, I thought we talked about the last, the first block of Main.
Yeah, I think we did too, from where it is now.
Okay. All right, understood.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
Bottom of Main Street.
So, we can Buckout and Astor.
For where it starts now. There's no more businesses down there, or, I mean, not right next to each other. And we talked about there's lots of reasons.
And Main Street from Buckout to Astor, both sides?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to put the meters. Yeah, really, we can make some revenue like during, have everyone have really angry.
They should also park longer, park 12 hours.
So, what's happening on North Buckout, right? Because that's the post office parking, right?
Yes. But there's specific, like, short-term parking on that street as well, but that's still going to stay the same.
Yeah.
You know, 15-minute parking or whatever.
So, I actually may change the section E to like six-hour parking or something and then do it instead of just doing it by streets.
Right.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, so Buckout Street, North Buckout, where the post office is, that would be six-hour?
Yes.
Okay, and then when you go around the corner.
I believe that's considered Bridge Street.
Okay, so that's what it stays at.
North Astor, yeah, I agree. Now, do you want, I mean, in light of having spaces on Main Street, which I, as I said, I missed that, do you want North Buckout to also be six-hour? In other words, how much inventory of six-hour spaces are you trying to provide? You made the suggestion.
Right now, where is parking for Matheson Park for people to be able to come in and out of the Matheson? Where can they park to go?
You know, Bridge Street is probably the most popular by the entrance there, down.
So, you're talking about the apartments? Is that what you mean by half moon?
No, no, no.
We're on the south bucket.
Yeah, we're not talking about the south bucket at all.
Okay.
Post office. Right, so right now, the way this is written, it would be a Main Street between Astor and Buckout. All of North Buckout, the post office, around the corner, then that stub of Bridge Street is all six-hour. So, my question is, do you want North Buckout included in that inventory of six-hour? Or can you get away with Main Street spaces plus Bridge Street spaces?
Because some of that North Buckout is residential homes.
Well, it's all, yeah, but they'll have tags.
Right, right.
So, they're not affected by that.
So, basically, North Buckout, you would leave it the way it is if we include North?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Six-hour right now.
Let's leave it the way it is.
Okay. All right, so then that's it, so we just.
So, I'm going to have that.
All right.
Okay. So, all these other cross-outs were dealing with streets, Askerac Garden, Bridge Street. No change, so really no change. And you get to page six.
I hear we're moving a lot of crap.
Well, yeah, but it's just.
It's what seems to be called in programming, coding is crap.
Yeah, no, but what happened is instead of a whole paragraph on Echo Street or whatever, it's just a line on the first page. It says, because it was obviously changed, you know, incrementally.
They're messing with the signs, it's a fun project here, right?
You can't.
It was like 1% of the time of work.
Well, no, I mean, everything in here says Monday through Friday. There are signs out there that say Monday through Saturday. Like, you just, you can't even, you can't even start.
We have to find, I'm a sign guy.
Well, it's not a small project to replace and get this all to say.
But color of the signs?
Okay. T was moved to the municipal parking areas. You, you had that, let me, let me see. No motor vehicle shall be parked for a period longer than one hour. Oh, yeah, this was eliminating the overnight parking on the cross. It was really kind of confusing though, because it was only, it was like on the east side on certain days and the west side on certain days. It was, it was, oh, it didn't make sense, anyway, so this is.
Worse either.
Yeah, I mean, they've had something to do with street sweeping, but we already have. We already have a provision on alternate sites between 8:00 and 10:00 AM.
For sure.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's all, that's covered there.
Does, is some, does every street in Irvington covered somewhere in here?
No, I don't think so. I mean, in what?
Every street in Irvington?
So, like in my street, and I see there's a sign halfway up that says no parking Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday.
It's possible, I don't.
Should be, yeah.
Well, please don't expand this project.
Okay, yeah.
No, no, I.
No, I doubt this at all.
All right, yeah, I 100% agree that there are places where things don't match the code. I think the intention is for what's signed to be in the code because that's what the police write the violations on. When and if violations are written that are not covered in the code, then the judge probably end their challenge, the judge would have to dismiss. But, and so it comes to our attention. Have we done a comprehensive project to match up signs and regulations?
I'm sorry.
Not recently. I'd give this number a turn for that. I mean, that's a big project.
When you get to, okay, W, again, I'm only raising the ones that are covered by something else. W was half-hour parking on Main Street, that was eliminated. X dealt with, that's been moved here as parking lot. And all of J, those are the, essentially, the street cleaning provisions.
Right.
And.
Which, by the way, at one point, we talked about shortening the window of time, possibly down to 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM or something like that. And I think.
It was just done for one street, I think.
We did it for South Buckout, but overall, we were trying to come up with a system that would work and I'm not confident that we could do that and still get the street sweeping down correctly. So, I didn't decide.
Page two.
Yeah, I didn't decide.
Thirty years.
And that's what that.
And you know what, this is just a tiny thing, but you see where L is on page eight? I'm going to move that to the end of the deduction because all the others deal with street cleaning and this is just kind of sticking out there. I don't know why it's there, but it won't be changed, it won't be.
Not changed, really.
So, actually, this will be a lot shorter. I mean, it's got to appear this way, so you need to, you know, so you see what changes.
Well, we're.
I think it's a delay.
It's only in a ramp, so of course it's going to be.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's, it's more, there's fewer, it's much more.
It's much more, right.
So, then more consistent regulations, more larger numbers.
You simplified it, right?
Really simplified.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, but it's, other than the changes Larry mentioned, they aren't any. Again, no changes were made outside of Main, Main Street here. Okay. Then, is the next one you have there says with respect to municipal parking areas?
Yes, this was paid. This was.
Okay, this was what?
This was paid.
A paying.
Yeah. A lot of cleaning, let's put it that way.
Okay, well, one change is we gave the lots names because they were called like municipal parking area eight, municipal parking area. And you had no idea and there was any reference.
I thought it was B.
Basically, you had to go out and see if there was a sign still posted to understand where it was.
It was pretty hard, okay. So, we gave them names and in going through them, found out that some don't exist really. C is the municipal parking area located on the west side of North Aester.
Like a pen-sensual railroad.
These are, these are the spaces immediately to the south of the old train station. So, there are spaces there, there's a couple parking spaces. Right against the platform.
Right.
There's like a half a dozen spaces. Some are owned by the train station owner and some are municipal. Well, those municipal, the group of like four or five spaces were considered a lot. And they're not signed that way. They're signed as, you know, X-hour parking, whatever it is, two-hour parking, whatever.
I think it says post office employee parking.
No.
No, that's just the one down.
No, right against the railroad platform.
Okay.
The bazaar, south bazaar. I can show you, it's like six blocks.
Oh, yeah.
That would be when it says orange. The whole C, cross down C.
Right.
Okay, never mind.
So, that became, that's no longer.
It's not one. Yeah.
It's not, it's just, yeah. I think it may have been used as like a taxi stand or something, but makes sense. But it's not.
So, it's not going to be signed. So, so now it's just North Buckout parking, is that it? Or what is that sign?
It's not the. There are just parking spaces on the street. This is Astor. I'll show you a picture, I'm sorry.
I mean, I mean, it's now for.
There are just parking spaces on the street.
But who controls the length of time?
We do it. Maybe, well, they're going to be, I think they're two-hour spaces. Because there's.
But they're still there, yeah.
The reason that, the reason that we designated Main Street between Astor and Buckout, North Buckout, and then around the corner on Bridge Street, and only those three at six hours, because there's really no business other than the post office, no business is there. Down on North Astor Street, where the bazaar is and there's other business on the other side of the street, there's business there, so we kept two-hour, you know, just like Main Street parking, regular Main Street parking.
All right.
It's not anymore, is it?
I believe it's not changed, yeah.
Okay.
It's just that it lost its designation.
Yeah.
It's not moving anymore.
Like I said, it's the Pluto parking lot.
Okay, and F was a cross-down municipal parking area located on the west side of South Aester and continuing in the southerly direction along the easterly portion of the right-of-way from Penn Central Railroad.
Oh, yeah, no, this is.
West side.
Okay.
Cross down.
Front of page one. This is actually the main Metro North parking lot. But back in the day, that was administered as a municipal parking area because we administered the parking permit process through lease arrangement. Well, they terminated the lease back in early 2000s, so it's not a municipal parking area. So, we took out.
Sure is not Penn Central, right there.
Well, back in the day.
Only 17 years later.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, then, okay, change in, go to page two, to 1323B. No vehicle shall be parked in any municipal parking area as the same are set for the previous section H2E unless there's attached a special parking permit. So, that, so that applies to the Equiduct Lot, Astor Lot, Arzan Hudson Train Station Lot, the Buckhouse Street Lot, the Sunnyside Lot. It does not apply to the Arzan Hudson Train Station Lot, the Vernon Building and the Field Point. Those all have special rules, which may inch further. Okay, in D, the number one and two under D, besides not sitting there at all, neither of them is operational anymore. Eight-two-hour parking spaces without special permit during daylight hours in municipal parking area B. And we figured municipal parking area B was the Yester Lot only because it's B. I mean, that's how it was done, but there aren't, there are. But there aren't eight, there are spaces there, so we took it out. And then, okay, here's a, uh, somebody gets a history model if they can figure this one out. A sign, "Do not block entrance," or a sign, "No parking from here to corner." Shall be posted at the southerly end of the Poska Curb Cut on South Ferris Street.
Must have been in the-
No, I don't think that is.
No, I, I-
Oh, you do?
I think there's someone else in the room that knows that as well, but, um, the, the Rancid's buildings are-
Yeah, the old Poska service-
That was the Poska service station.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, so anyway.
It's in the same basic location as the Curb Cut, right?
Is that what you're gonna think, that specific on the?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 so that's out, okay. Um, all right, then he deals with the parking regulations.
Someone came through and said, "I need, I need someone to put that there," like Mr. Poska.
Yeah, and Basil opened up his trunk and pulled out something. I got it.
Okay, then, remember I said that before that tho, those were the rules for A to E? Okay, then here's the, the Vernon Building spaces, those are the rules for those. Those you passed just a few years ago, actually, that's pretty new. Then F are the parking relations, regulations for the municipal parking area, um, the Hudson Road West Lot. Now, these regulations were somewhere else, so they, they really weren't changed. They're pretty much the same, but I moved them out, but they had no parking sections.
This, this is the lot, you know, essentially, the, the parking that is considered ardsely on Hudson Train Station Parking, we broke into two separate lots, because there's two separate sets of regulations that cover them. You can still park with the same permit, but the one lot, the Hudson Road West Lot, as if it's adjacent to the tennis courts, is, um, has an hourly component to it as well, so that's why it's broken up. But no change there.
And then, okay, same thing with the Field Point. That was just moved from another, another section. In two thirteen twenty-four C, that was just fixed up. It referred to three, six, nine-month permits, where in fact, only six, six month and one year given, so that was cleaned up. Um, in E, uh, it says that the daytime permits are good from, uh, an Aqueduct Lot from eight to eight, rather than eight to six.
Right. That's actually an important distinction, because we, uh, uh, we wanted, we wanted there to be a longer window that would match the resident parking tax, the on-street resident tax, um, so that employees could use the Aqueduct Lot with a daytime permit if they, if they chose to. You know what I mean? And that's what that special daytime permit is for, so.
And then, in F, even though it looks like a lot of change, really the only change there was that the time used to be, those special parking permits were effective from seven to seven, we made it eight to eight, so it's all the same.
Just the-
Yeah, and then, um, and then G is new. Um, the village will issue no more than 10 special daytime permits permitting parking between eight and eight, Monday through Friday in the Field Point Lot. Uh, the application for those daytime permits can either be a resident or non-resident, and we vote your own resident provision.
Yeah, so we, this was, um, I mean, we may get some, some pushback from the business owners along Broadway there, but we, the intention here was to, um, allow for employee parking in that lot, but not taking up the entire lot, because that lot is used for patrons of the businesses along Broadway, where there's not a lot of on-street parking. I mean, there is, but it's kind of perilous, um, but-
That lot seems awfully full to me, almost all the time when I go by there. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if there's park there, but.
I mean, you have a hard time parking.
Really?
Yeah.
And then I walk by there early in the morning.
We'll have to, we'll have to keep an eye on this one. We are, those spaces are getting expanded.
Right, right, right.
But that's part of the, yeah, so that may, that may help the situation a little bit.
Compressed, but expanded.
Yeah. Yes.
So that's it on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, with your big, you big one up and made us, yeah, I don't know, it was complicated.
There's a lot of cleanup that was done here. You glossed over it all, but, which is good.
Yeah, nobody needs to know.
There's a lot of cleanup.
We need to stay away. No, I, I think we're saying this to say, it's a compliment for appreciating the amount that went into this.
Right, yeah, sure. Well, Larry had a lot to spare time on these.
No, it wasn't me, okay? I, I just said what I wanted, and Larry had to interpret it into words, so.
But it was not a research.
Can you move this here?
Yeah, there was leading up to it, yes.
It was a good, I like puzzles.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it worked, okay. Um, all right, then the next one is the resident parking permits law, and like, um, there's a new provision, provision B that makes the parking districts, that's what Larry was explaining, that force the way that you're like parking district, um, had to add a definition for an area employer, which just is the owner or operator of a business located within the restricted parking zone, which is the downtown area. Um, and then, and then, uh, definitions added for an employer parking permit would be a tag issued by the village clerk who near an employer to be hung on the rearview mirror of the auto reveal of the employer's area employer, or no definition for restricted parking. Um, and it was, it did say the law previously talked about a sticker or decal was actually a tag, so it fixed that. And it was supposed to be a tag, so now we can do the next one on the mirror, which is what was being done. Um, set the next section. Um, are, are the, pretty much the rules for those permits, not where you could park, but the rules for the permits and employer parking permits were added to it, so it's not, now there's resident parking permits and employer parking permits.
Uh, one thing that I just wanted to point out is, um, in, on item C in section three, this is page two, where it talks about commercial vehicles being eligible for these permits. Um, that, uh, we're not changing that right now. I understand that there's a proposal as part of the comprehensive plan recommendations, and we're not, the intention here is not to make any, any change to that. We're, you know, you, you all have to go through that process with the comprehensive plan, but, so we're just tracking the language that's already there, so.
But writing in the pencil.
Well, it's up to you.
We're not gonna change, update these for another 150 years, or like we did these, right? Anyway.
Any other changes that have to do with the, the being tags instead of the, um, stickers, yeah?
Where's the section that gives trustees of special reserved parking lots?
On Mondays and Wednesdays.
On Main Street, it's working.
In the comprehensive plan. We could park as a Field Point lot.
Yeah, yeah, right.
No, we're in 40 minutes.
Special parking.
There you go, let's have a time limit.
Yeah, there you go.
I ever snuck a parking spot was the little alley here. I think I did it twice. I was running out to drop off a bag, but.
And did you get a?
It's a good, no. No, no, it's like, it's been closed for a while.
Yeah, but that's gonna be opened up again.
Yeah. And you should park there.
Same mayor's parking.
Yeah.
Poor trustees, we could stack up three cars in there.
Okay, section four, there's, there are really no substantive changes in there at all. It's just cleanup. Um-
Stickers from-
Except, I took out this owl on page four. Uh, this is real, all resident parking permits issued after this article expiration in 2006.
That's been on the books.
We can't.
So actually tomorrow, we're gonna go take it everybody. It's expired, exactly.
This, this section five may need some more.
I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Some more thought, I have to say.
Yeah, I know.
Can't put brain freeze, you know? Okay, employer parking permit.
Well, and I, and Mary Ann asked me for what I wanted to see here, and I couldn't.
But I don't know, maybe there doesn't need to be a lot. An area employer can apply, now remember, this is the, essentially the pillow to the resident parking permits, okay? An area employer may apply for up to two employer parking permits for use by, by its employees. An employer parking permit may be used by any employee of the area employer during hours that they are working for the area employer. And I guess this is pretty much up to the employer to police, and see how the village can, right?
No.
Well, what do you mean, someone using the permit, what, even though they're not working?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean.
I mean, there's nothing you can-
But that provision's there if you have a problem. If a problem presents itself, then you can deal with it. You're not gonna go out and proactively find those problems.
No, no, yeah, and I would think that there would be an incentive for the employer.
You want, you wouldn't have spots.
Right.
Right, the real-
They only got two spaces.
That's right, so.
And two is because that's what you found that most places need, or?
You could spare them.
It's like, don't you have carbon trading rates or something, like permit trading between restaurants and?
Yeah.
Restaurants and?
And single practitioner offices.
I mean, if the black market develops, that's fine.
We'd like to encourage them.
But I mean, like, if you look at Gorgon's-
Secondary markets.
Eight or nine big ones, yeah.
If you start seeing them on stuff, we're in trouble.
I know you had to pick a number out of them.
Well, look, some of the feedback that we got was from the businesses, but also some of the feedback we got was from residents who were not all that excited to be issuing, having the village issue their resident permits to employees or employers. Now, as I said, not that I'm discounting what their concerns are, but the reality is those people, not using that derogatory, those people are parking there already. They're parking in, in the restricted parking zone already, and now they're parking there for six hours plus. So, um, you know, there, there are other alternatives. Uh, for the employers that have more than two, which a lot do, of course, um, although there are a few do, the, the Aqueduct Lot is available with the, with the daytime permits. Um, and, and the Field Point Lot is available with the daytime permits, the 10 that we talked about here. So, and that does, that's not restricted to two hours or six hours, that's, they can park eight a.m. to eight p.m. After eight p.m., you know, there, there's, there's less demand in the Aqueduct Lot, because the people can park out on the street. So they, they can continue to go over if they have to, if it's a restaurant, for example, that have their employees there till ten, you know?
In other words, have you listened to everybody and balanced all of the various possible solutions? This seems like the best way to proceed.
Is this, is this one where I could see, you know, half a dozen hardship cases come to you, saying, "Oh, my gosh, we just have no place for our employees to park. We're hamstrung here. What are we gonna do? I can't have them going out and moving their car every two hours. Um, there's not enough spaces in the Aqueduct Lot." I, I don't know, that could happen, I suppose. Um, I, the numbers, to us, we don't see it, but.
Are there a lot of workers that commute? Are that a big public transportation?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's some, I, I don't have, we didn't break that out. We focused on the ones that drove to work. Um, but there are definitely ones where the numbers don't match up exactly. So, for example, an employer tells us that they have eight employees and five drive to work. So the implication is the rest either walk or, or take.
Carpool.
Or whatever, yeah.
Well, Larry, right now, there, there's no appointment to this, right? There's no place for them to park, right, other than?
Six-hour.
Oh, the six-hour lots.
That's where they have to.
Okay, the six-hour, okay.
Well, six-hour on-street spaces.
Okay.
Anywhere in the district. Um, and look, I mean-
How many of those are, how many six, roughly, how many six-hour spaces would you say are going?
That were pulling out of service and changing the two?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, I have, I have the numbers in a spreadsheet.
You have any idea? I mean?
We-
I'm just wondering how that, what the trade-off would be. It may not be, I, it may or may not be very different.
That might be the only issue with our allowance of flexibility to take the train with the six-hour spots, if a lot of those get filled up by employers potentially.
Yeah, but what's, I guess not, I was gonna say, most of those people leave early, go to a train, but not necessarily at the third.
Yeah, not, not that the six-hour spots are, you have a two-hour appointment in the city or whatever.
Yeah.
Two-block appointment, so you might, you might have to extend it up a little further than Main Street or something. If, if this bill over from the players.
The only other six-hour spots are on South Buckout, the one block.
Right.
Has six-hour spots.
So we have- Everything on Broadway, era, off of Main Street is two.
No, although, although Buckout, I think, is six hours on Main Street. But I'm surprised that wasn't included in the six, that was excluded, was South Buckout.
Mr. Buckout, Conner, Dutcher.
Because all the side streets are now six, right?
All the side streets up to, up to Ferris.
I care.
Are, well, what, what it is currently is-
Current.
The only side streets from Aster up to Ferris.
Oh, I didn't know that, really.
I believe are six-hour. After that, when you get to, uh, Aqueduct Lane, Dearman, Grinnell Home, that whole area, I think is two, so. Um, so the number of spaces, the number of on-street spaces for all of those streets, north and south of those streets, is, um, 320. So, so, I'm sorry, so then you subtract, I, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but North Buckout is 28 spaces that you're keeping six-hour. Um, uh, and Main Street, I don't have the number, Main Street, Aster, to Buckout, but it's probably-
Twenty-five?
I don't think it's even that much, I guess.
Maybe it is.
Twenty?
Yeah, say twenty.
Okay.
So that's 48.
Um, and then there's a little bit on Bridge Street, which I, I really don't have a count of.
It's probably less than 60 altogether, I guess, around 60.
Yeah, that'll be six-hour.
From 320.
So that, so that is an option still, for those, for those people that, you know, if you're at a, if you're at a restaurant on, between Eckers and Dutcher, right? And there's no spaces available for you there, and you have no, not enough permits, you can park in the Aqueduct Lot for a daytime fee from eight to eight, or you can park on any of the six hours at the lower part of Main Street, which, which you'll be competing with local residents who don't have driveways on that street.
Short-term.
And short-term renters, but.
The Aqueduct, when you said for a daily rate, are you saying they have to buy one a year, every day, or?
No, 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 for, I'm sorry, a daytime, a daytime rate.
It's not like it's gonna be a-
No, it's a yearly, or we do six months every year, so, yeah.
It's not a parking machine.
It's not that expensive. I mean, it's 200, I think it's, the daytime fee is $200 a year. The resident fee that lives in the area is only 100. So, it, I mean, this is one of those things where we've looked at the best data that we can look at, and, you know, we're trying to balance those, those comments and concerns about-
Sure.
Residents who want zero employee tags given out. And, and the fact is, and balance that with the fact that you have employees that work here that you have to deal with. And, and our, our position in going through this is that the best way to deal with your employees is to, of course, is allow them to park, but dictate where they're gonna park, or, you know, better guide where they're gonna park.
I think that's a perfectly fine solution.
Right. And we found that from the employee, the employers, by the way, when we met with a few of them. You know, some of the comments we got back, not that it was unanimous, but some of the comments we got back were, "Yeah, I don't, I don't care if my employee has to walk four blocks."
I don't want parking in front of my restaurant.
Well, yeah, right, exactly. They want, they're, they're looking forward to having, you know, room for their patrons to park with less conflict with the local residents, you know what I mean, and that constant agitation.
Look, you have an X number of parking spaces, you know, and you're trying to just make equitable access.
Right. So we felt moving the employees was the easiest path, the path of least resistance, and not, we're not, we're not telling a resident that lives on Eckers Street that they have to go park on Buckout, you know what I mean? That's not what this is about at all. That's not gonna be the case. Okay.
I also believe this is gonna be one where we're gonna have to, you know, end up tweaking it, is my guess, but we, we start-
I can imagine.
Yeah, and, but I think there's no way to anticipate all the potential, you know? As long as we've addressed plenty of public safety issues, which I think we have, um, you know, and try to minimize.
Simplify it.
Yeah, exactly right.
Makes it comprehensive.
Yeah.
This is, I would say this section, the 29.7, is the one that if you guys were so disposed, you might wanna spend a little time on, to see how it could be, uh, with, uh-
I'll say, where are you?
Employee parking on this thing, yeah.
Yeah.
It's minimal, yeah, so if you might think of more restrictions, okay. Um-
About discounts for free takeout?
Wait, you mean to do car, to rent your car with the-
Yeah, that'll work for.
The, the Gorgans has a bike now, right?
Yeah, so.
Electric bike.
Is that what it is?
Okay, and then two thirty-nine point eight, A, isn't really a change, other than, you know, changing the eight to eight, I, I, it says that you, uh, vehicles exhibiting either this resident parking or employee parking permit should be permitted to park in the restricted parking district for which the permit was issued, in excess of the posted two hour, four hour, six hour limit between eight and eight, except that the parking permits don't permit parking on Main Street in excess of the posted limits, then I have to add that it doesn't permit parking in municipal lots, because technically the municipal lots are listed in the, are included in the, um, restricted parking district, so, so, uh, that's it on there, nothing really, no changes on the Scott Ford thing, so that's it. And then this, this last one is really, very, this is really peculiar.
Just crossing everything, there's nothing.
No, it makes, so, look at it, it was, these were the only streets it was unlawful to double park on, oh my gosh.
So bizarre.
No, it's Broadway, so, yeah.
I would play so she could double park.
Yeah.
Isn't that odd?
So we, out of nowhere, we, we asked the chief, so where can you double park? He said, nowhere, and that's the answer.
Yeah.
So.
But she's like, but somebody went to the trouble of listing the streets where couldn't double park on.
Cars and carriages.
Double park cars and carriages.
It's amazing how few places.
Everywhere else, go for it.
Isn't it weird, like, but now you.
The streets you can't park on at all?
Yeah.
So take advantage while.
Anywhere you can park, you can double park.
You can double park, right, you.
It probably doubles the block.
Yeah.
Um.
That's the way around the problem.
Melissa, Larry, what do you wanna do next? This is just a couple of tweaks I have to make.
Well, look, I, I think, um, I think we'll make, we'll make some changes.
There's only, there's only taken time.
Yeah, there's only any change.
Right, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not all that interested in announcing this in August and passing it in August.
No, 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 but I'm just making, start getting it.
It's a great welcome back from, from vacation, then we could post.
Where are you gonna park?
Well, I have a problem, we could, we could technically, in, at the August meeting, we could technically, um, open a public hearing.
I think.
Keep it open, we'll have everything posted, people can get copies, whatever they wanna do.
Yeah.
You know.
But you're called for, isn't it?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll put it down, you know, we'll call for the public hearing.
We did say we won't vote on it until at least September.
Yeah, we'll, we'll hit that one.
Yeah, I think some of them, like, when.
Yes.
Cause we're, yeah, I know you did email some of the people that had talked about parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, and also say, you're writing this thing, and there's like eighty-five different things you're thinking, well, or somebody else is just gonna focus on this, on their street and say, wait a minute, is this right on my street there, so I think it would be hot.
So can we also see, I forget what you made, this is the marked up version, just the one with everything out, that you've taken out, so a clean copy?
Yeah, well, that's what you'll get to us.
No, I, I think you need this to, to, you need this, but is it also? You need this to, like, to go.
So people can see.
What you're deleting, or, yeah, yeah, but, okay, I'll do, I'll prepare a clean copy.
Yeah, a clean copy would just be helpful, cause there's so much.
Right, maybe overwhelming for the, for the public to look at that.
Right, well, no, confusing without an explanation, like you just got, but I also have.
Yeah, and then you.
I also have a, a summary written in layman's terms, you know, that's what I'm starting to talk about, so I have that, which can be cleaned up and corrected to match everything that's gone on here, and, uh, that can be used in our explanation process, um, so it's not just gonna be this group of technical laws.
Exactly.
You know, the group, the technical changes to the law, the group's starting to focus, the focus is what are you actually accomplishing, and I have that on a kind of a one-page summary sheet.
Well, but, um, so are we ready to announce, I mean, I'm not ca- if I had to provide to do the clean copies, I may not have that on time for.
We can, we can.
I don't think you need the clean copy.
Yeah, we can use the, we can use the during.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we'll do, we'll announce, we'll have, all they have to have is a copy of the local law on their desk.
And the August meetings, I'm gonna be away for the actual regular meetings, I'll be here for the work session.
That's the same, we actually, we're, we're gone the same two weeks.
I think I was the opposite. I'm away for the.
The work session.
I'm away for the work session.
Okay.
And I'm back for the radio.
The work session's just gonna be a barbecue.
I will be in now, so I'm not, I won't be missing the barbecue.
There you go.
I have to get the French laundry done, but.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Would be.
Yeah, fancy guy.
So I will make.
Thirty-fifth anniversary.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn.
No, you guys, you've got high slide.
All right, that's right, so this is easy though.
Minor.
So just to confirm.
Both local lots are gonna be for clash and bulk waste. So no change to the August meetings, we're okay with you, I mean, uh.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be away in the most obvious way.
I'm, I'm anywhere, my kids can have it.
Oh, sure. So we have. I'm sure that's, there's not gonna be a heck of a lot on the agenda.
We'll get the story, we'll say.
Put that in there next, please, there will not be a heck of a lot on the agenda.
All right, so, uh, all right, so the bulk waste. Yes, sorry. Yeah, that's, no, this is, I think this is pretty straightforward, so, um, as much, we've tried a lot of different, um, ways to be able to charge for the pickup of bulk waste, um, there were a number of different scenarios that we came up with that involved, you know, purchasing a tag ahead of time, a sticker, and you put a sticker on your pile of stuff, and then the DPW picks it up, uh, you pay whatever, you know, twenty-five dollars for the sticker, but then it got into questions of, well, what's an, what's an item, is, is a table an item, and the chairs individual items, is it all one thing, is it, how big is it, what if it's two pickups, so, the whole series of things that we got into, um, plus there is also the, uh, a factor was exactly the way the DPW currently functions, we were trying to, to minimize the impact to the way they actually function their routes and how they pick up bulk waste. Right now, essentially, the way they pick up bulk waste is not by appointment or, or anything, they, they basically drive as part of their normal, uh, route, and, uh, the, the drivers recognize a pile that's waiting to be picked up, and they make note of it, and then they return with their satellite truck or whatever, you know, vehicle is needed in order to take the, the particular item away.
So the appointment is only for electronics?
I mean, you can make an appointment, but it's not necessary.
Also, textile recycling, you're supposed to let them know in advance.
Right, this doesn't change any of that.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, the system we came up with essentially is that the drivers will continue to do what they do, except when they have a pickup, they will record the date and time, the nature of, a brief description of what it is they picked up and the address, and that information, which we've done, we've started to collect just to see if it works, will be provided to the clerk's office, and the clerk's office will send out a bill, so it's essentially like a pay by toll, uh, pay, pay by mail for tolls, you know, you.
But is it by item or by pickup?
No, it's by pickup, and that's the point, is that if someone leaves out a large amount of stuff, and it requires multiple pickups, uh, because it doesn't fit in the truck, they're gonna pay twice, but that's pretty rare, um, in the number of times that happens, but if they leave out, you know, a couch and a table and a bunch of chairs, and that all fits in the back, and they do it in one pickup, that's, that's one.
That's the thing.
Uh, we, we've been proposing, it's not here, uh, we were suggesting something along the lines of twenty-five dollars.
That seems to be.
Exactly, the discount, twenty-five dollars, I think.
So the purpose of this is, uh, the, the two purposes, not to necessarily raise revenue, although it does, um, but also to, um, provide a disincentive for throwing out, um, bulk